I will call. I will call the meeting to order. Welcome to all of the visitors who are zooming in with us tonight. First order of business is to pledge allegiance to the flag. So if Michael can say something, so we get his picture back up front. With the flag.
Cindy, you go ahead. It's it's held up.
Well, there it is.
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Um, let me get organized. The first order of business is to approve the agenda. A motion, if if you're going to wave, I think you need to speak so that your picture comes up because you're kind of spread out all over tonight.
Moved second.
All right. I heard a second from Isetta. Who moved?
John.
John? Thank you. All right. A motion by John and seconded by Isetta to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Then all in favor and we'll go, I'll just call a roll. John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina? Tina?
She said yes. She doesn't have any sound. I can see her.
Um, Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And Isetta?
Yes.
Um, somebody there has a, I hear children in the background. If that's your house, could you mute your mic, please? We have our presentations first. Michael, would you like to introduce our first set of presentations from the elementary school?
Absolutely. I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Petra Cola at some point tonight so that she can have Mrs. Brule speak a little bit about the collaborative classroom, but it's a pleasure to introduce Carson Smith with us tonight. Carson's a first grader in Mrs. Moby's class. You know, so I heard such great things about Carson from both his administrators and his parents. The last time I was walking the elementary building with Mrs. Petra Cola, I asked that if she would invite Carson to do a little presentation tonight. So Mrs. Petra Cola, I'll turn it over to you and have you officially welcome Carson.
Thank you. Carson is a standout student for us at NRWE as a leader already in grade one. He has Ms. Roberts, who's with us tonight as his long-term substitute, and Mrs. Mobilio as his classroom teacher. I could say with a complete honesty that Carson made sure that we knew who he was right when he began at NRWE. And we love him for that because he's got a lot to say, but he's almost always right. And he's very good at working with others and he's also really enjoyed our new program this year. So we thought he'd be a great representative for us. So Carson, do you want to share some of your thoughts?
Can I, can I read this?
You can.
My favorite part of reading this year is IDR, independent daily reading, because we get to read lots of books. I also like being a writer because I normally have trouble writing. Ms. Roberts helps us start it and then I get to use my imagination. We get to write funny fiction stories. Reading is an important skill because reading is an important skill because it is a good way to communicate. It also helps me remember information and it's fun. My favorite thing to read about is science. Chemistry and space are interesting, too.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great job, Carson. So Melissa, why don't you keep going with your portion, please?
Sure. We also have Ms. Samantha Brule with us tonight. She's teaching fourth grade this year for us. And we asked her to share a little bit about our ELA program collaborative classroom. As you heard from Carson, a few of the program components at first grade include independent daily reading, writing. And Ms. Brule teaches a different part of that program to our older students. So Samantha, would you like to share your thoughts?
Sure. Um, my name's Ms. Brule. I teach fourth grade and there's a lot of parts of collaborative classroom that I've really enjoyed getting to teach this year. I think one of my favorite things about it is just the diversity of texts. I feel like there's been a lot of great conversation that's come from a lot of books we've been able to read. And just being able to introduce at least one or two new books every week has been great and definitely helped to build a lot of background knowledge for the students. And I'd say most of the time they're pretty engaging for the kids and they get really excited when we start a new book. There's also a lot of great mentor texts with the writing program, which really get the kids thinking and brainstorming ideas for writing. Because a lot of the times, one of the hardest things for them with beginning to write is just knowing where to start or just coming up with ideas. So just having those as models is really great for them. I also really like how there's an emphasis on vocabulary. And that's helped especially for my students who are learning English as a second language or in different stages of that. Because there is a lot of support and suggestions throughout the curriculum and the whole group lessons and smaller group portions with tips, including different words that you might want to go in more depth with, with explaining beyond just the typical vocabulary you would explain during a read aloud or in a lesson. And there's just little things throughout to just differentiate a little more for students who might need that. And you can kind of make decisions on that based on where you know your students are within their acquisition of English. Another thing with the vocabulary they've really enjoyed is just how much fun the lessons are for vocabulary. A lot of times there is a game. It helps students to think about different shades of meaning within a word. And it's, there's also a lot of just interaction with the kids where they're trying the words out multiple times. And the vocabulary lessons follow the whole group lesson where they would see the words in context one week. And then the following week they're just being exposed to those words again through the vocabulary lessons through direct instruction. So that they're seeing these words multiple times and having a lot of opportunities to interact with them, which is something that they need to really make that a part of their vocabulary. My students have also, like Carson was saying, really enjoyed IDR. It's been really great for them to be able to choose their own text within a genre that we're working in and just have that flexibility, whether it's on a book from an online website or from our classroom library. They're able to find that type of book and then there's a specific strategy or thing they're working on, such as making inferences, something we're doing recently, where they're applying the strategy that we are practicing and working on in whole group and in partner work to their independent readings. So just having IDR following our whole group lesson has been really helpful because students are then taking what they're learning and practicing and being introduced to as a group. And then they're applying it to what they're trying to do independently as readers. So those are, those are a few of the things that I've really enjoyed about it. I think it's another thing with the writing program. It's been really cool to see how they just go through a unit of study within the writing, within a certain genre. So right now we're working on narrative fiction and the students have been getting very excited just thinking about the different types of narratives they can write. And they've been exposed to so many different narratives throughout the year, just getting them to kind of branch out of what they would typically write and just point to different ideas that they have just heard in the narratives that we've read has been cool. I think it's been really interesting, just with the discussions, how students, we've been able to have some really good discussions, for example, around segregation and just things that students need to know about and they're an important part of our history and talk about and have a space where they can do that. So there's just been a lot of good representation within the literature of a wide variety of people. And I think that's really brought in a lot of other just subjects that we've been able to dive into within that, such as social studies and even science. So those are some things we're enjoying about it, but I think it's been really successful with our students this year. And just being able to even implement it, it's very clear in format and easy for us to follow and then add to if we want to extend a lesson or we have extra time or just to kind of adjust where we need to, especially this year.
Thank you for that. So I'm going to ask that the campus and SWBR team, just wait one minute. Melissa, go ahead. Let's do this STEM presentation quick as well because having construction management and engineers in the audience, I think that they're gonna enjoy what we show next.
Sure. We have two team members here. Sam is a parent liaison. Sam Gardner works closely with the community and with our staff and fulfilling requests and needs that they have. And we also have Mrs. Sarah Demaree, who teaches STEAM for the past three years. And she works with all students UPK through four on different projects and is constantly looking for things to engage kids and challenge their thinking and challenging their growth mindset. And so they've kind of taken on a new project and are looking to accept a gift tonight. So we had a quick presentation. I know you guys want to move on with our lives and everything, especially with construction. I know everybody's excited about that. So like she said, I'm Sarah Demaree and I'm the STEAM teacher at the elementary school. So tonight I just wanted to quickly talk about what STEAM is real quick, just in case we have any new members or community members watching this who are not really familiar with the classes. It stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art and Math. The science is, you know, the study of the world, the natural world around us. But we try to focus on things that are not being covered in the gen ed curriculum. So kids are getting exposed to a lot more information than they otherwise would have been with the state curriculum. We use a lot of technology, anything from simple tools and machines that can help us to coding and robotics. The engineering, I always tell my students that they think of science as being, understanding how things work in the world. And engineering is taking that information and turning it into products that help, help us and help others and help the environment. You know, things like that. So it's all about problem solving and creating things that are going to make things better as we move on. The art part is not really like painting and drawing. It's really about that creative and divergent thinking that's required for effective problem solving. I think that kind of out of the box mentality. And the math, it's not really like multiplication, but really quantifying the information and data that we're getting from experiments. So like graphing information, working within budgets, which cracks me up that they love doing that. But they, you know, you give them 10 bucks and they go bananas over it. It's really funny. Our classroom is also really big with the 21st century skills. So mindset. You know, we, I actually do a whole unit around mindset. It's explicitly taught skill. It's not something they just passively learn. So we talk a lot about, you know, if your tower falls down, how do we handle that? How do we deal with frustration? I have been very, not surprised, but very, very pleased with the accessibility of this class. It's been able to reach a lot of our kids who struggle with ELA, struggle with math, might have behavioral issues in a traditional classroom. Because in STEM, it's very hands-on. So suddenly these kids who might be falling behind in other areas have a way to like become a leader and they, they do very well with it, which has been very nice to see you year after year. We do a lot of teamwork and a lot of explicitly teaching how to work with a partner, including problem solving. We go step by step. The engineering process is all about thinking through problems and how to go back to the beginning and thinking through again without giving up and career readiness. So this was some engineers who, one of them actually graduated from NRW and he's an engineer now and they came and helped our second graders build some bridges. This is our curriculum for next year. So there is a link, if you have the PowerPoint, you are definitely free to go through and just kind of see what each grade level will be doing next year with us. You know, fingers crossed all things get back to semi-normal, knock on wood. And as for the donation, the Sam Gardner, on behalf of the parent group, applied for this Hess truck donation. It is 12 rescue trucks that came and we are one of a thousand schools who are granted this. It does come with a curriculum for STEM specifically. And the curriculum is created by Baylor College and they set out these curriculums every year. They're pretty dense and they are definitely child appropriate, like they are, they would work really well with our classrooms. And I kind of intend on using them for third grade specifically because there's a very big tie to career readiness with, you know, community outreach and considering helping others as well as like the force of motion aspects that go along with it. So those would tie in really well with their scientific concepts that they, that they use in second and third grade. So we are asking that you guys will just approve of this donation so that we can keep building it into the curriculum and plan it out a little bit better. I hope that you guys are excited for, you know, for us getting back to regular STEAM class next year. And if you have any questions, you know, just let us know.
Well, thank you. This was wonderful. The STEM is certainly a hands-on and it's wonderful to see what's going on in the elementary school. That's what learning is all about with the hands-on approach. And yes, we're excited about the Hess trucks and we were grateful for the effort that was put forth in, in applying for that grant and getting it. We're also delighted to hear about the ELA, the reading and the writing and how they all go together. And Carson, are you still with us? Where is Carson?
I think he just ducked out.
Oh.
I'll share, I'll share your feedback with them though tomorrow or on Wednesday.
All right. Well, to tell him, you know, it's one thing hearing, hearing the facts and the figures from the teachers, but it's another thing to hear it out of a student's experience and, and have them actually tell us about it in their own words. And we certainly do appreciate Carson taking the time to be with us and express all that. Any other board members want to say anything or add?
Yes, I would. I think the presentations were wonderful. The graphics, the screens were lively and really told the story. I think STEM with the Hess trucks is a good uniting of a university using some practical, if you will, toy-like things to have units made that are real life situations. And I think kids really appreciate that. It's not just a textbook things. It's, it's real life. And the things that you can do with them are great. So I do hope that we have our PR person take some pictures and put them in the paper because that on social media, this is what life is. This is what school is fun and for kids. And yet they learn by doing it. So I would encourage the PR to get going on it. It's wonderful. Thank you very much. You did a great job.
I just, I just wanted to chime in and say I really appreciated all the enthusiasm from Carson as a student and it was interesting to, to hear what he had to say and reflect on his experience. But also Ms. Demaree and Ms. Brule really fleshed out everything as to what's going on in the, in the classrooms. And that was great. Thank you. Thank you for presenting what's going on in the elementary school tonight. Good to hear. Michael, shall we move on to the SWBR and campus?
I think so, especially right after the STEM STEAM presentation. Absolutely. And maybe we'll do some oral reading fluency with these guys later on, too.
Yeah, they're, they have a hard act to follow here now.
That's right. But I, I think they're up for their task. So gentlemen, we'll turn it over to you.
I can start. This is Kevin. Thank you. Those are tough acts to follow. It looks like you got some great stuff going with your faculty and kids. It's fun to hear the kids take you back off what you guys have talked about. But I'll give our typical monthly update and then Steve or SWBR can jump in if there's some things they can help with. But progress is still continued. I'll start at the middle school. As we've been reporting for several months, the second and third floor are in really good shape. There has been some miscellaneous components that have been finished up and of course some punchless progress. On the first floor, the, starting at the north end of the building, the office space finishes are just about complete. Furniture has been installed. The one lacking component up on that north end is still the fire-rated glass and frame system that separates the office space from the secure vestibule entrance. That still has not shipped. It's actually, we got some kind of tough information a week ago. It's still probably four to six, four to five weeks out. So four weeks out. So it's going to be in the early March before that arrives on site. Across the hall, the kitchen is, is virtually complete. In fact, all the connections are made on the equipment and training was facilitated at the end of last week. The cafeteria is close. Most finishes are completed with the exception of the floor tile. That space is still in need of floor tile and then the entire assembly of the seating, chairs and seating. The first floor corridors have made significant progress in the last four weeks. Pretty much all the ceilings and mechanicals are installed. Painting is ongoing. There's still a little bit of painting to do. What's lacking in the corridors is the flooring, which I'm going to circle back to. The ELA rooms on the south end are are going to get back on track. I don't, I think we reported last month, but there was a found condition in that space. There was a little bit of asbestos that needed to be cleaned up. And then there was a little bit of construction disputed item from the general trades, which we got confirmation today. They are going to remobilize, install the flooring and put the finished floor down. And that should get us out of that space in the next probably two to three weeks. Outside the building, the exterior door package that was facilitated by change order. The doors have started to arrive. The frame and sill system on the bus loop entrances installed. The, on the north side, the new doors are installed. Each week for about the next two, two and a half weeks, the remaining doors will show up and will work their way right around that building. So that would get the envelope taken care of. The last significant space in the middle school is the auditorium. Last month we reported the auditorium. We, I think we, it stated we found suspect material. Unfortunately, it has been tested. It was verified to be asbestos containing. That generated the need for a Department of Labor inspection and ultimately a variance application to determine the means and methods of removal. We did get the approval of the variance Monday morning of this week. So that's been issued to the contractor to build a, a proposal for remediation plan. It's got significant schedule impact, of course. There's, you know, we have to facilitate a significant large, large change order. Get the contractor mobilized, do the removals, clean up ETC. So that has a setback and it's got a small ripple effect. I talked about those corridors. In the process for removing these, a basement in the odd, they have to set up decon units or washout areas. And part of that will be in the corridor. So we're right now sorting through if, if we should hold up on installing the rest of the finishes, primarily the flooring, knowing that we're going to build some temporary construction right on top of it. We're still working that out. It, it is done many times. We could protect the floor and still do that, you know, without disrupting the new finish. But we're wondering if timing wise, it just makes sense to maybe push the flooring out and just sequence it. So there's no, there's no risk there. The other components at that building, the award of the acoustical package that happened last month. The acoustics for the gymnasium have been ordered. They're due to arrive on site in early March. And we'll schedule the installation as soon as, as soon as they're onsite. And then the window repair package that was awarded. That contractor has his hands on most of the materials and is due to mobilize and start doing the repair work around the building as early as next week. So those are, that's what's remaining. That's what's going to push out for the next couple of months into the spring before that building is determined to be 100% substantial complete. Any questions on the middle school? Quick update on the elementary school, the floor tile that had a dial out and coloring issue has been 100% removed and replaced. Contractor finished a week or two back. We did final inspections on Friday. So whatever deficiencies or issues that were identified will be issued to the contractor for cleanup. We should be able to close that out pretty efficiently in the next, by two to four weeks to get that one behind us. And the only other update at the high school, the doors, anyone has walked that building, the fire doors that were replaced came in the wrong color, but they were swung for security anyways. They are being replaced at no charge of the district. We're just waiting on the delivery of the new doors and go right back in the same frame that's installed. That's all I had unless there's any questions or if Steve, if you wanted to add anything, welcome to. Yes, sir.
Could I give you a question on all the various systems that you have, the heating, the air conditioning, security, kitchen stuff, their training manuals for all those things? And how do our people get to know how to run the heating system, let's say, or the air conditioning system? So does both of you figure into that, too?
Yeah, good question. Yes, there's 100% training that's provided upon turnover. Like I said, we did do, get the training done for the kitchen equipment. That's pretty simple. The heating system, there'll be a training program set up and I, I don't want to quote it, but often in the documents, it calls for a certain amount of hours that your building management service provider will, will owe the district for training. In every instance of all the new equipment, there's absolutely an owner's manual and maintenance manual that's turned over to the district. We facilitate that process. We collate all the data and we've got a nice check sheet checklist to make sure that we do get it all and it's properly turned over. So that, there's also, you know, jumping back a step, there's a commissioning, third-party commissioning agent onboard, too, that'll do all final inspections to make sure all the systems are operating as intended. So I'd have to check with our onsite team to see we're right in that process, but it is ongoing.
Well, like, like our automobiles are getting more and more complex and as they go to more battery operated. The person who used to repair a car on a tree someplace in the summer is outmoded now. It's almost like it's impossible. Is it the same way with our systems, like the heating, the air conditioning? And maybe is it now online now or do we get a third party to it? Or do we hire local people to operate our air conditioning, let's say?
Good question. And I'll start with the answer and maybe Steve can shore me up if needed. But the answer is yes, they are very sophisticated systems. They're fully electronic. You have to be as skilled in running a computer as you do as mechanically inclined, in my opinion. But to that note, they are very efficient. They're the top, top line. That's, you know, the, the very high-end system. You're going to be 100% electronic. Yeah, your service provider who's day, it will be right at your side typically to help troubleshoot all of your day-to-day activities. They also provide additional training. And then there are third-party vendors that would do service if, if it was something outside the district's capacity. There's very many services out there that can help with that, too.
Thank you. And I'll add, this is Steve.
Sure. And I'll add, this is Steve Revels, that it is um, it is important for the district to, to have, you know, and build that capacity in-house. So your director of facilities will want to become very familiar with the systems. And as Kevin said, um, day automation has been your um, controls provider and will continue to, to provide that support so that the systems um, can be um, monitored and um, and serviced appropriately.
John, we will, um, this is Dave Phelps. We'll go through the spec and we'll get that exact hour count that Kevin referenced for training and we'll communicate that through Mike to the board. Where, to fully answer your question.
Thank you. It seemed like you, you have to do something a little different than we did thirty, forty years ago.
Yeah, and it's usually facilitated pretty methodically. If there's, it's, let's say you get twenty hours, it'd be broken up into segments. So you, nobody gets overwhelmed with an entire day of training. You, they would facilitate it where they'll do different components. Keep it pretty um, uh, deliverable.
Thank you.
Hey Kevin, do we have a new uh, anticipated date of completion?
Yeah, it's pushing out towards the, with all the change order work and everything else. It's out towards the end of April, but I have one asterisk with that. The auditorium that I just mentioned, with the variance just getting in hand yet, Monday of this week. There's several different paths that could take and we're really reliant on the contractor to help guide us and, you know, tell us what the durations look like. But before we even get to that award, we need to um, make sure we're on the most efficient economical path for the district to get it remediated. So um, it's a, it's still up in the air. So I, I struggle with committing to the actual finish date of that space, knowing that there's a significant amount of work that has to get changed. But the rest of the building is on track for um, an end of April delivery or substantial completion.
So you're saying that you would complete that? I guess it won't be this year anyway, so it would be over the summer. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Kevin, Kevin, a question on the high school. I think maybe you've tried to answer it. I don't remember, four thirteen, they're on the schedule, the doors. It showed that they were complete, but then the, the line went out further into March. Is that because you literally did install the doors, but they were the wrong doors and that's why the, that it goes on back into March?
Yes, yeah, unfortunately, the doors that showed up were the wrong um, wrong finish. So. Other questions?
Questions? Okay, I don't see any more. So thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Cinda, you need to unmute.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Okay, get muted. All right, good, thank you. That completes the presentations. Uh, we'll move on to reports and correspondence, um, starting with um, the high school. I believe we have a building goals update from Scott and Jason. Here we are.
Is that viewable for everybody?
Yes, thank, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. Um, we wanted to just take a brief opportunity to share an update on uh, what's happened at the high school over the first half of the year. Since our foundation in September where we laid out our goals. I'd like to welcome uh, the group who'll be helping present tonight. Uh, we have Jason Shetler, the assistant principal, and then two members of our leadership team are joining us to share uh, a little bit about what they've done to help work towards our goals. We have Amy Victorowitz and Caitlin Waszuski. So thank you to them um, for joining us tonight. Before we get into the update, we wanna just circle back to kinda what helped us formulate our plan. And these were the questions that we asked ourselves over the summer as we worked to put our plan together and just to highlight those, it's what do we want students to, to learn? How are we gonna know or assess that they're, they're learning it? How are we responding um, when they do learn and when they don't learn? So that we can either remediate or enrich uh, and respond to their needs and then making sure that while we do all that, we're attentive to their social emotional needs as well as their academic. So just to share some um, first semester data, uh, first semester ended um, at the end of January. So we were able to look at some data and some numbers. And I just wanna highlight here, um, there's two different charts. Uh, the top one is from quarter one, the first ten weeks and the bottom one is from quarter two, the second ten weeks. And this data here really just highlights the number of students who are achieving it especially high levels, um, despite the circumstances that we find ourselves in. So a large number of students making the honor roll, making the merit roll, um, which is really impressive. Uh, we appreciate the hard work that those students are putting in, um, and they deserve the opportunity to be recognized. So we wanted to share that with you. Um, just in looking at between honor roll and merit roll in the first ten weeks, we had a hundred and seventy-two students make that target and then a hundred and eighty-six total students in the second quarter. So really commend those students for the hard work uh, and the teachers for helping them uh, achieve those high levels. Additionally, we did see from quarter one to quarter two, uh, a decrease in the overall number of failures, which we're really proud of. There are some students who are struggling in this mode, but we've found ways to reach those students and we're seeing movement in the right direction. We're still not exactly where we wanna be and we're gonna continue to, to work with those students to, to decrease that number even more. But we're optimistic about the progress that we've made. The first goal that we had that we wanna update is about curriculum development and professional learning. We've really had a focus these first twenty weeks on collaboration, uh, making sure that we're able to provide student choice. And that we're supporting students' social emotional needs uh, by providing professional development to our staff. Amy and Caitlin are gonna give an update on their role uh, specific to this goal.
Thank you. So in the first half of the year, we worked hard to develop curriculum maps and ensure students taking the same course have common experiences, even if they have different teachers. And each department collaborated to create rigorous standards based maps. And you will see on this slide, an example of the template we filled out for each of our courses, which really helps us ensure each part of our curriculum aligns back to our standards. And we started this year with a complete set of curriculum maps for seven courses. And we now have a complete set of curriculum maps for forty-nine courses, which actually represents all of the courses taught at the high school this fall. And we also started meeting in departments. At first, we worked on curriculum maps so we could ensure all teachers teaching the same course, we're using the same curriculum. And that ensures every student who successfully completes the course comes out with certain skills and learning outcomes. And we also worked hard to ensure that courses in the same subject area build off of one another so that there's consistency from one grade level to the next and the rigor also increases. And then we also worked on using common assessments, which helps us analyze data and discuss the instructional strategies that are really helping our students the most. And then we can build off of that for the second half of the year. And we recently discussed grading practices, which will help us provide consistency between teachers and each department and will also really help students know what to expect, which also balances the social emotion.
Thanks Caitlin. So this year, it's been such a powerful experience to be an instructional coach for our staff as we've navigated our way through educating our students in the middle of a pandemic. In September, the staff was faced with the challenge of providing instruction to virtual and hybrid students, which was something new for every person in the building. However, up until this point, as an instructional coach, I've been able to work with thirty-three different staff members, one-on-one to help with these challenges. Examples of our work has included using Google Classroom, Google Slides, Google Forms, EdPuzzle, Flipgrid, et cetera, more effectively. Creating meaningful playlists, student goal setting, classroom discipline, varied assessments, enrichment activities, pacing, gamification, and so much more. Throughout my interactions with the staff, they have showed how dedicated they are in providing for the well-being and education of our students. That my work with them has really occurred as early as six-thirty in the morning or as late as eight-thirty PM at night. Some of the earliest and latest conversations have occurred by phone, email, Zoom, text, and then during the school day, I work with the teachers and staff during their planning periods, lunches, and in action actually during their classroom times. Furthermore, our staff has been working hard to embed social mo- oh, mo- that, sorry, social emotional learning into daily instruction. The counselors, along with Erica Ebert, have provided some amazing information and training to help make this happen. Erica meets with our staff regularly and then actually has us take part in the actual mindfulness activities, which then helps teach them to our students. Our staff is really, really working hard in the areas of curriculum development and professional learning and will be so many more opportunities in the second half of the year to continue help, to continue to help to meet their needs.
Thank you. Moving on to the next goal, uh, community engagement. Really focusing here to foster relationships um, with people in the district to celebrate staff and student achievement and then to find ways to invite community into the building. Which we've had to get creative with this year.
So uh, some of the things that we've done to really try to uh, motivate and engage our community uh, is utilizing social media. So we have our Facebook page and our, our uh, public relations person, Amanda's done a great job kinda linking those things directly onto the website where staff members, students, their parents and the community at large can really get a sense of what we're doing here at school on a daily basis, celebrating uh, a lot of the great things that are going on. Uh, one of the things that's been very popular is the live streaming events, whether it's uh, concerts that Mr. Bradley will talk about in a moment or um, sporting events, of course, where we can't have everybody there in person, unfortunately, but they at least get a kind of a taste of uh, what's happening and can cheer on their favorite teams and players. A mental health support team and the administrative team have developed these we will statements. So those we will statements are kind of our commitments to each other, to our students and to the community. Things that we find important that we wanna make sure that are happening. And the student of the month recognition. So we're recognizing uh, students with high achievement and high, in good character. And uh, we do that in conjunction with the Rotary here.
Additionally, we were able to have, you know, a, a really nice winter concert in December. You know, finding ways to get people into the building has, has been a challenge, obviously. So we're trying to find ways to invite people in virtually. The concerts and the live streaming are a great way to do that. Another thing that we've uh, listened to feedback on was the navigation of the district website and really trying to streamline some of the things on there and clean that up so that, you know, you can get to information that you need in one or two clicks as opposed to six or seven and making that information more readily accessible. We've partnered with Dollars for Scholars and been working to plan through uh, ways to provide scholarships and opportunities for students getting ready to leave the school. Um, we're excited for the way that they're able to support uh, the students in the building. And finally, we've had an opportunity to, to survey uh, students and staff to get feedback from them directly on how's the year going, just to ask some open-ended questions and, and get their insight. And we took that and we, we shared it out so that everybody could hear it and students could hear, or staff could hear how other staff were feeling. They could hear how students were feeling and that really helped um, with the social emotional piece and get a better understanding of how everybody's feeling throughout all of this.
So at our beginning of the year presentation, we talked about how we would utilize multi-tiered systems of support to reach, help us reach some of our goals. Uh, one of those goals was to have ninety percent of the students score proficient on the New York State Regents examinations and that we'd increase mastery rates by fifteen percent. So we wanna make sure that we're continuing to do these things and um, I'm, I'm very proud of the progress that we've made over the course of this year. We originally presented on the second day of school. And since that point, we've uh, really kind of fine tuned these multi-tiered systems to support the students and the family members uh, that we serve. So one of the first things we recognized is that uh, staff hadn't had a training in MTSS in some time. Maybe been us, you know, three to five years or some of the staff hadn't been trained at all. So we worked with Kelly Marciano to come in and uh, develop a training that would kinda go through the nuts and bolts. And they had a question and answer uh, session with us where we broke into different rooms and they could ask questions that were specific to them. We've come a long way, especially I think what I'm most proud of is our bi-weekly tier one and weekly tier two meetings. So part, a part of our practice here at the high school is meeting with our grade levels and really talking about specific best practices that can support the students on a day-to-day basis. That's really what tier one is, is really just kind of identifying those basic things that are um, meeting the needs of students and making sure that we replicate those and teach those to each other. The tier two is a little more intensive. These are students that haven't responded as what, as well to the tier one and we might need some additional supports for them. And we meet on a weekly basis with our team uh, that utilizes our school resource officer, Officer Pitt. Uh, we have our counseling staff, administrators and teachers join us on an as needed be uh, basis. So we really talk about specific things that we can do to meet the needs of all students. Panorama is something that I'm excited about as well. Uh, you see on your screen, you're following along, there's a snapshot of that panorama software. And what this enables us to do, supposed to having uh, multiple reports when we talk about a student, attendance reports, academics, behavioral, it's a one-stop shop. Where on one screen, we can utilize all the different information that we might need to make sound decisions regarding the students. And we can also take those students that have similar needs and break them into different groups where we can look at them as a whole and then apply different interventions to them. So I'm looking forward to continue working with Panorama. Uh, we're getting better. We're, there's a couple of kinks that we've uh, been able to work out and um, again, you know, seeing this as something we'll be utilizing much more in the future. Partnering with those outside agencies, Wayne Behavioral Health and um, you know, I just mentioned our SRO, which is a tremendous help for us and our students. Mid-year assessments is a way to just check in, make sure things are going well. And our instructional coaching, you know, this with, with Torowitz, which does a tremendous job for us. Uh, going out to teachers, helping them with those tier one supports, uh, teaching them the things that might be effective that she's come across. Uh, so that's really a, a great asset to us. Staff and student mentor program. So we, we recognize some students that were not responding as well as we'd hoped to our interventions. They were engaging in the school day, but not to the level that we were hoping for. So we took every single staff member that we have, all of our teachers, and we gave them between three and four names of students to kinda take on and really take under their wing. So we communicate with the families on, on a weekly basis, the students. We talk about uh, SEL needs that they might have, things that they're struggling with, you know, being home or only coming to school a couple of days a week. Uh, we work with the families and give them assistance and how to kinda monitor and check in and support their child while, while we're not there. Uh, and that's something that uh, we're, we're very proud of and we've made a lot of gains with here. Uh, some students that weren't engaging that we've been able to kinda reengage and get them to where we would like them to be. The check-in checkout program, uh, students get to have an opportunity to work with a preferred staff member if they need a little support in terms of academics or behavioral and they start their day with this person and end their day with this person. And it's a nice kind of consistency and another uh, trusted person that they can talk with about their day, whether there are areas for growth or to celebrate, you know, a positive day. And our lift program is an opportunity for us to support kids outside the school day, whether with academic supports or recreational.
The last goal that we want to update on is just our finance goal. You know, which basically consists of working with people in the, the building and in our departments to make sure that we're aligning our, our resources in the appropriate places, supporting the district's plan, and then maximizing our resources. So we've been fortunate to see some really nice improvements to the building throughout the first half of the year. We got our entryway redone, pergola was painted. We got some lights added to really create a welcoming environment, which you can see an image of there, we're, we're really happy with how that turned out. Additional lighting that is supposed to arrive today. New lights for the gymnasium, which we've seen the test one that has gone up and it really brightens up the space. It's a nice, bright white, clean light. You know, doing some painting in the hallways and in the cafeteria and really just puts a nice fresh coat on. It brightens up the building and it creates an environment that's warm and welcoming and that people can be proud of when they come into, come into it and make them excited to be here. We've gone through the, the initial stages of the budget development for the twenty-one and twenty-two school year. And we've worked with Mr. Megan on, on that and feel like we're in a good place moving forward with planning for the next school year. We have been able to realize some benefit from the LIFT programming. A lot of that has been virtually, has been done virtually up to this point in the year where students are receiving online tutoring and things of that nature. But we're, we're really hopeful that in the not-too-distant future, we'll be able to offer some small-sized in-person support for students, both academic and then eventually at some point transitioning into where we can have some of those more fun type of activities for those students. And then finally, we've been working with a few different teachers and with the district office on looking at potential academic programming things that we can add moving forward to provide experiences and programs that are relevant for our students and are going to meet their needs. And hopefully, we can see a few of those things fall into place for next year so that we're able to, to offer a few different ways to have our students engage them and provide experiences for them in the appropriate fashion. Well, that sums up what we have as a presentation. And we're happy to take any questions or thoughts at this point.
I can give you a thought. The first part of your presentation had the, the whole idea of what education is. What, what do you expect out of the students and how you measure it on a timely basis? And, and how you modify it if needed? And then you, how you treat the already proficient? I mean, if you could master all those things as a school, everyone would be really happy. And, and to put it on clearly and concisely, as you did in this presentation, I think is a really, a really good attribute to any plan. Because then everyone knows clearly what's expected. I also was impressed with the number of ninth graders who got to the honor, one of the honor rolls. There was quite an increase from quarter one to quarter two, which is a very good sign because that's a tough transition year. Kudos to your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Do another one.
John, or are you done or?
Go ahead, Linda.
Hey, these are good things to get, you know, get a seat at the table. We'll take this all day long.
I, Linda, it was very comprehensive presentation, but it was also impressive with how many different areas that affect our students and families that you've dealt with already this year. Good job.
Thank you very much.
I, I was also impressed on a couple, maybe not so small things. If you have a, a building that you're proud of because paint or whatever, maintenance, cleanliness, that that goes a long ways in making the pride of the, the students also pride in what they're doing in the building and the teachers also, and the community. And I was also impressed with how you're using the SRO. How Wayne Behavioral Health, that's a very good thing to use in our county. They're very, very valuable. So I was impressed, keep it up, that sounds good.
Thank you. I will admit that I have to really thank Mr. Megan and then Dan Friday before he left and Ted Hargarther since he's been on, the night I saw the lights for the first time in the front of the building. There was a pretty big grin on my face, I was really happy with how that looks.
Yeah, that used to be awfully dark coming in.
You'd be shocked at the conversation we had after that capital project. And they didn't do certain things in front of the building that we requested. And I think that really screws it up.
Linda, can I? I've never gotten over the cutting down of all those wonderful trees, but you know. Paul, did you?
Yeah, please. And that first semester data, you know, what is the cutoff there for the merit roll? Is there a number, like is that an eighty percent?
Yeah, so the numbers that we use for those were ninety-five and above, then ninety to ninety-four, eighty-five to eighty-nine, and eight to eighty-four.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I noticed that's about a five percent increase in students over, over one semester. That sounds sustainable in the long term, but that's fantastic in the short term, I congratulate you for that. I also want to congratulate you, I think that staff-student mentor program, that really sounds fabulous to me. I think everything that I've read and heard is that if you can connect with a teacher, that makes such a big difference, and you're already having that accomplished, so well done.
Thank you, it was a big kudos to Jason for that. He really took, took the horns on that one and got things going, he put a lot of work into getting that organized.
Anyone else?
Cindy, can I say one thing?
Sure.
I just wanted to, this goes to the elementary school and the high school. We sit through a lot of presentations and, you know, you get a feeling of how much and how far our staff goes for our students in the presentations that you guys give. It's one thing just to give a presentation with statistics. But ours always seem to be deeper than that. And it makes me, just, it just reinforces the fact that we've made the right decision in bringing our kids up and throws walk it. Because we're so lucky to have staff members that we do. Great job by presentation by both schools because it was, it was informative. I think it opens the eyes of other board members to see how the day-to-days go. Sam's presentation was amazing. So thanks, guys, I really appreciate it. And our students are two more importantly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and we'll be anxious to see what great strides you make as the year continues. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
We'll move now on to the Board of Education Building Liaison. Jason, Isabella, would you like to start with the elementary?
Yeah, I have that couple things I'd like to go over. I get weekly updates from the elementary school. And, you know, I'm going to circle back around to it. Sam's presentation really kind of brought everything together because there's such a focus on literacy in that school and understanding what you're reading. And it, it just makes me feel good about the fact that when they, when those students do transition into the middle school and the high school, it's just going to make that transition easier because they're understanding what they're hearing and what they're, everything that they're taking in. So that's close to you guys for making that, that a focal point. Because it, it is very apparent to somebody who's outside like myself when I get those weekly updates. The other thing too is, the elementary school would love to, to thank and spotlight the hard work and of the teachers and the staff, parents as well, because the academic gains for this year so far have been, in their words, remarkable. And it takes a community like we talked about before to get gains like that, so kudos to you guys. The other, the other people, the other person that they'd like to spotlight is Sam Gardner. She's agreed to be a part of the community literacy team, and she helped partner with the literacy volunteers of Wayne County and the Rose Work Woke it Public Libraries to start the Our Community Reads initiative program. They had fifty-seven students the other night listen to Mr. Poole for, for some reading at home. And they just wanted to make sure that Sam knew that we'd really appreciate her and we don't know what we'd do without you in this district. But keep up the good work at the elementary school because I hear a lot of positive things.
Great, great, thank you.
Isabella, did you have anything?
Isabella, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I found out I'm on mute again. But no, I really haven't. Information one way or the other from the school. And I guess I'm, I try not to butt into the day knowing that it is full and beyond trying to do virtual classroom, the whole nine yards. I really, if they have something they need, definitely contact me, but they haven't. And I'll put out, uh, I'll put out a, uh, I'm here if you need me message to them again. But no, I haven't heard anything.
All right, thank you. And Tina, how about the middle school?
They feel like they're off to a good second semester. They're kind of holding things as they were. Student plans and goals have been going well, they're getting a lot of support from their teachers. Teachers are feeling like they're getting a lot of support from parents. So there's definitely a partnership going that's been pretty effective. And they're looking forward to winter break. So that was it.
Good, all right, thank you. And Paul, for the high school?
Yeah, I've been staying out of the high school due to the COVID issues, but not that the high school has a bad situation at all, they're doing great. But there's so many good things going on at the high school. In the, inserted in that presentation that Scott gave was a kindness challenge, was tucked down in a corner. Scott's still, I mean, excuse me, yeah, Scott's still on. And so I want Scott to enhance that, that video with regard to the kindness challenge. Scott, what's going on in the high school on that one?
So Kathy LaValle's class really took charge on that. Kathy LaValle had them lead a building-wide kindness challenge. And it was really just a week-long of small acts of kindness for other students and teachers and staff members in the community. So they hung things up around the building, they passed out little, you know, just little messages to really try and spread kindness and cheer, and they did a great job. They made announcements every morning to the, to the whole building. And just started everybody off on a good note. It was a really nice thing that they, they did, and they just took charge of that.
In addition to that, what's going on is the student council for the month of February is running a a program where they can enhance the Cougar Cupboard. And so that's another, a student-initiated event, doing a wonderful job. And of course athletics are, you know, we're all excited about that. And hopefully, we'll get a better update on athletics later. But I, I can give a few of my good news, but yeah, everything's going well at the high school as you could see from the presentation and from us, our comments.
Yeah, good, good, thank you. Linda, no, Isabella, you're the, are you chair of audit? Do you want to report on that or turn it over to Bob to report? It's up to you.
I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Bob or Linda because they, I was putting my granddaughter on the school bus at the time of that meeting, so I was unable to attend.
Okay.
I can do a quick recap. The audit committee did meet, and it was a review of the yearly federal grants and the Twenty-First Century Grants. Federal grants are yearly and the Twenty-First Century Grants are specific and last for a certain amount of time. And the auditors reported there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the audit of the grant accounts. So the committee is recommending acceptance on the, of the board of the report.
Does anyone have any questions about that report? Board members, any, any questions on that audit?
I don't have a question, Cindy, but I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
Yeah, that's the second year in a row that that audit has had no deficiencies, is that correct, Bob? Yeah, I mean, I just want to applaud that, to have an audit with no deficiencies, two years running, that's like almost impossible. I just want to congratulate Bob and his team for doing that.
I think it perhaps more than two years, it's multiple years for this audit.
Yes, and I have to put credit while outside the business office. We've got a lot of people that deal with the grants, the special education department. Bridget Barr, of course, and her role handles a lot of things with grants. And there's a lot of paperwork that needs to be done, salary certifications, et cetera. And over the years, everybody's jumped in and kind of done their part to make sure that we do meet all those requirements.
Great, good, takes a team, doesn't it? Linda, do you want to proceed with Four County?
Yes, I have two things. First of all, the Four County Board of Directors had their annual meeting. And first of all, the election of officers. And then there was a reminder that the Four County has a new catalog for services that they've sent out to all the districts. They did announce that Lester Young is our new Commissioner of Education. And Four County was represented in Albany at the Capitol Conference recently. There also is going to be a New York State Schools Board Association survey that will be coming out, if it has, I don't think it came out today, but it will be coming out soon for board members to give opinions and feedback. And one of the things that they spent some time discussing at that Board of Directors meeting was the lack of internet equity in our schools across the state. The second thing is the Legislative Committee, which I serve on for the district. You all have gotten a copy of the Four County state positions that are going to be presented from Four County, and it covers several areas. Equity and predictability and funding, mental health of students and adults, and equitable internet access. The, the committee, which has representatives from the twenty-one districts, we're going to be, Bosse's will be contacting David Little, who was instrumental in the rural schools section of the New York State School Board Association, and see if he might help us to aid in drafting some possible legislation that we can present to our representatives in the Senate on behalf of Four County. Any questions?
And for the board members, on lobby day, our, our board was well-represented. Linda was there, Paul was there, and I attended through Zoom, of course. But we supported what Four County was doing. So, and that was, that was an interesting experience. Paul, anything you want to say about it, or Linda, about lobby day?
Yeah, I'd like to add a little bit, I was on the Zoom program with Senator Helming. And just to go along with what Linda just reported, I think Myra had some, had some, some folks that were already armed with questions and comments. And actually, it turned out to be a, an information session for Senator Helming. And actually, it turned out to be a, an information session for Senator Helming. But equity and probability and funding, yeah, so funding was a big issue and about four people commented on that. The second one, their mental health, that was big. And I just would, it would add to all the things that you see here on that point paper was that we also emphasized that mental health goes all the way to the family. It's not just staff and students, but it goes to the family too. Then on the internet access, Senator Helming had proposed a statewide survey and investigation on that. And I, and she mentioned that. Then I noticed that right after that Governor Cuomo put a thumbs down on that whole idea. But, but I've been also wondering, you know, SpaceX has, have launched so many satellites now in that Starlink. And that's specifically for rural areas. So I'm kind of wondering just on my own if that might provide better access for our students. Then the one other thing that was covered on that Zoom meeting that wasn't on the position paper was the bus drivers. And it was pointed out again that, boy, just about everybody's looking for bus drivers. And I smugly said nothing because of course Bob's done a great job on, and getting them for our, for our district. But that was all that I had. But it was a nice session. And I, I want to add one more thing. Senator Helming also congratulated every school to stick on the great job that they've been doing with the, you know, transportation and meals and virtual training. And she seemed to be very well tuned to all the things that we were suggesting.
All right. So those are, those are the updates and reports. We move now to the consent agenda.
Can I just add a couple of things?
Oh, sure.
As we, we did see Brian Mangtulow's representative and he of course touched on all of the same issues about broadband and mental health. And, but he also talked a bit about budget costs and local tax caps. And Brian Mangtulow, Pam Helming, and Tom O'Meara, the senator that I listened to, they all seem to be in favor of raising the percentage for the fund balance that districts are allowed from four percent to a higher percentage to help with budgeting costs. And they also spoke to, well, actually Tom O'Meara, Senator O'Meara is not in favor of a move that might be taken, which would be consolidating some of the aid together that are cost-driven and that could be, have quite an impact on our districts. I think Bob could probably tell you more about that than, than I can, but that was another thing that he brought up. Can I do?
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I need to, I need to see who's talking.
Paul.
Paul, oh, thank you, Paul. And a second?
Second.
John, is that you?
Yeah.
Thank you. Questions and discussion on the consent agenda?
Cindy? Item H, no discussion. So you don't want to take it off the consent agenda, but now how we roll through these consent agendas so quickly. I just wanted to say a, a comment about Amy Shear. You know, her, her title is clerk typist. That's almost a joke. She, she is so helpful in that front office. I think she knows every student in the high school and probably knows her parents and probably knows the grandparents. She's just such a wealth of information and she and Carrie work so well together. I'm sure if Scott was still on, I'm sure he'd say the same thing. They're such a great team. And even when things, I've gone into that, to the high school and, and when they're being thrown several curves and they just go, oh, yeah, things are kind of crazy around here this morning, but we'll deal with it. We'll get it. So I just want to say, you know, everybody's replaceable. I understand that. But she's, it's going to be a tough one. That's going to be a significant loss to our district. I wish her well in her retirement.
Yeah, she served the district very well.
I'd like to piggyback on that. And I was thinking the same thing, Paul. Those are some big shoes that are in need of being filled. She wore a lot of hats and we definitely appreciate her.
Yeah. Anything else? Hearing none, I'll call the roll for vote on the approval of the consent agenda. John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
All right. Motion is carried. Now we move to good news tonight. Paul, do you want to go first? I just assumed you have good news.
Well, you're right. I got plenty of good news. In fact, I have, I had so much good news tonight, I actually started to eliminate some of it.
Well, you can't say it all, which is a wonderful thing.
The kindness challenge, we've already discussed that. Nice article in the Lakeshore News about the kindness challenge at the high school. Another article in the Lakeshore News about our updating the strategic plan. Jason, you were talking about the community read. So another nice article. And this, I just want to give a quick ad a boy to Virginia Keenan from the Woke Public Library. She wrote the article, but it dovetails perfectly with our North Rose Elementary community read. Winter sports, and I just bring this article out of the Lakeshore News because our new A.D., Mark Blankenberg, really got a lot of good comments in there. He had a lot to offer about how to open the winter sports. And then here he is in living color in the newspaper, really nice article about our new A.D. And speaking about sports, just a quick update on things that I've been able to, to read. Our bowling team continues to do well. We both the men and, both the men and women of bowling teams beat the Red Creek and also Lions. We did lose to Clyde Savannah, but it's okay, we're, you know, we're doing well on the bowling team. And I wanted to point out a couple of specific scores. Chance Van Chuck, if I've got the name pronounced correctly, or Van Chuck, he had a two-hundred game. And then in the, for Lady Cougars, Eldia, excuse me, Lydia McIntyre, she had a two-twenty-two high game and a five-eighty-six high series. Yeah, we did win that one. Also, we, the swimming, so North Rose Woke Cougars were over Marcus Whitman and also Clyde Savannah. So our swimmers are also doing well. And then I think my favorite part of good news is to highlight our former students and their dean's list capabilities. So I've got one from the Bob Jones list. That's Emily Otroski. She's a junior from Woke, doing well, of course. Bob Jones, Finger Lakes Community College. Kenzie Graham on the dean's list. And then also a couple others that I didn't get out of the newspaper, but I was able to track, was able to track down. Anna Marie DiRizio, again, on the role, dean's listed RIT. Her sister Nicole on the dean's list at Wells. And then Brianna Boone at Brockport State in a double major is running a four-oh. So there's some more North Rose Woke students that are just doing a wonderful job at higher education. And my disclaimer, I only report the ones I know. There's others, but I don't know them.
Anyone else have good news?
I have a couple of things that our community read in the advertiser that came out. The library has put out a nice advertisement about how to check out books, cars, videos, series, and the incentives that they give. So they're kind of dovetailing with the school, which is a nice thing. They're also in the Finger Lakes Times. There was a high school supports of indoor boys' track. And we had Clayton Reed in the shop, but came in first. And for the girls indoor, we had fifty-five meter hurdles. Hannah Scooby came in, it looks like second, third. So congratulations to those kids there. You know, COVID's not going to beat us all.
No, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Then we'll move on to the superintendent's update. Michael?
Thank you. So just to kind of wrap it up, I mean, as you can tell by several of the presentations tonight, there are a lot of good things going on in our school district, elementary, middle, and high school. We're making remarkable progress. So if we were to sit back and look at the first semester and think back to all the challenges and obstacles that the staff and the administrators have had to overcome, to think about the tremendous gains that we continue to make, you know, if you sit back and take that in to consider COVID, to consider remote learning, the hybrid plan, the restrictions, we're really doing some great things. So I appreciate the work of the teachers and certainly the administrators. And, and tonight is a, you know, a prime example of all the good things that are happening pre-K through twelve. So to piggyback on what we're hearing about, a lot of mental health supports, a lot of literacy push for our students in particular, and then to kind of think about how we're being responsive, we're, we're building those relationships and, and making sure that what we're doing is relevant. One of the things that I want to highlight to you tonight, and that will bring more information forward is, you know, Bridget Barr, Community Schools Administrator, has really done a tremendous job of seeking out additional resources and supports for all of our program. I think you heard that through the lift program. I think you heard about the Twenty-First Century stuff. One of the things that I'm really excited to, to mention to you that we'll have more information coming forward with is a Safe Schools hotline number that Bridget's been responsible for reaching out to a company as another asset to our district. And what we're entering into an agreement with is a twenty-four-seven monitoring system where we'll have a number on our website. So when students or staff get to the point where they feel like they needed additional resource or support, the Safe Schools hotline number will, will put them in touch with a live person. So, you know, the district's done a great job with gaggle and several other things. The school safety plan, things of that nature. But Bridget bringing in this resource together for us, really, it's an invaluable piece of insurance, in my opinion. So my hope is that when we get together in two weeks, we can give you some actual literature on what the number is for our district and where we're going. And when you think about educating the whole child, a lot of times people are, are stuck in terms of what resources and support to provide. This kind of eliminates that for people outside of the school hours. You know, we may or may not always get the information in a timely fashion beyond the workday. Well, this kind of removes that barrier and ensures that there's somebody that's live and that it'll actually work with first responders and the school district to get in touch with us immediately. So I'm looking forward to her update on that. And, and as I said, I'm hopeful that in two weeks, we can put some literature in your hands to speak to that. I think that's going to be an incredible resource for our, our community. Additionally, you know that she's working with Rochester General to do telemedics and that she continues to push for that because there's a great need for our community to have access and equal access to, you know, healthcare. So kudos to Bridget for doing that. I want to highlight Mrs. Mars' classroom and say that, you know, this Friday, we get to celebrate the Hundred Day Celebration with a group of eager first graders. So we're looking forward to going down and spending some time with her class and, you know, taking advantage of the opportunity to interact with them because the Hundred Day feat is, is quite remarkable. And then to enjoy that through the eyes of a first grader, I'm looking forward to it. And to kind of go along with that, you know, the random masks of kindness that Mrs. LaValle's class, we've heard talk about tonight. I mean, I think so much of what we're dealing with on a regular basis talks about how disengaged people are, how apathetic the affect is when you're hiding buying a mask. It takes some small subtle reminders from people, in particular our students, to say, you know, things are okay. And we recognize that daily life is, is still pretty good and we should be thankful for it. So I appreciate Mrs. LaValle and her students sending the treats up. I've actually been tempted to eat this bag several times over the last couple of days, but now that I've shared it, I'll enjoy that tomorrow morning. There's a lot of sweets in there for me. I also just want to say thank you to people at large, you know, the Department of Operations for our local community. So when you think about our town supervisors and our highway superintendents keeping the roads clean with the winds blowing and the, and the storms that come in and change in a moment's notice. Thankfully, we've been able to continue our pathway and travel to and from school safely. So that's been incredible. And then the Department of Health, last Friday, the educators for Wayne County were brought up to a vaccine clinic, all twelve component districts. So the eleven local districts and BOCs started the vaccine clinics based on a lottery. So the Department of Health, primarily operated by five nurses, have been working nonstop since last March. So when you think about it, they've had truly one day, which was this past Christmas, and half a day for this past Thanksgiving off since March. So those ladies are doing a pretty phenomenal job when you think about the, the county that they serve and the fact that in many cases, they've been working seven days a week, twelve and fourteen hours a day. So Diane Devlin and her staff deserve applause for what they've been able to do to keep schools open and what they're doing now to run both the testing and the vaccine clinics. And that's something that I really would say, been doing a fantastic job of keeping schools apprised. We meet with Diane weekly. So again, there's more than five people at the Department of Health, but those five nurses have been really holding a lot of things together for our county and they deserve recognition. You know, as you heard earlier, the school district is pretty proud of what we're doing. The administrators and teachers are really taking a look at that first semester data. You know, we're data informed. We understand that there's a student behind every measure. And I, I would say to you, as a testament to the, the district and the school improvement plans, we're, we're pretty lucky to have such a great support system, as we heard. This, this year has not been easy by any stretch of the imagination, but we're keeping our eyes forward and we're continuing to strive for that standard. So I, I just think that it's important to recognize that, you know, there's a lot of good things happening under some extremely difficult circumstances. So from my perspective, we're doing great things. So thank you for allowing me to share that brief scenario or synopsis with you about what's happening from my point of view.
Thank you. That completes the business that's on our agenda. The board does need to go into executive session at this time. We do not expect to be doing any business when we return into open session. So for those of you who are zooming in as visitors, if you want to stay with us, in a minute I'll turn it over to Tina and she'll tell you, give you instructions for that. But right now I need to have a motion to have the board go into executive session.
Don't so move for a second.
Now, wait a minute, I haven't given a motion yet. Going to executive session to discuss the employment history of a specific individual. Now, Tina?
Yeah.
Okay, a motion by Tina Reed.
A second.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Then we vote on this. John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Isetta?
Yes.
Motion is carried. We'll take a short break, board members, while Tina gets things, Tina St. John gets things straightened out for the visitors zooming in.